This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, April the 22nd. Please stand for our invocation led by Father Dan Good, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. God our Father, we love you and we thank you for the gift of the city of Mobile and our people. We ask you to please bless our leaders, bless all those who work and serve our city, protect them from all harm. Lord God, we ask that you would give to our city peace, justice, and integrity. Help us, Lord God, to be people who seek justice in all things and equality for all. We pray this in the name of your son, Jesus, who is Lord forever and ever, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, et liberae, and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn. Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our April 22nd meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrate position, the off or the vibrate Interpersonate designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonate designed to speak on a non agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject they he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not get proper notice to the City Clerk office and wish to speak on another agenda item will not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing, and the second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, all statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of April 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications for Mayor Simpson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone here today. Yesterday afternoon, I joined, was joined by representatives from the FBI, the US Attorney's Office, Mobile Police Department, and the Sheriff's Department, and we held a press conference talking about the recent violence that had occurred over this past weekend, where we had a group of citizens, of young people playing basketball, and somebody drove by and shot into the crowd, killing one young lady and one and another young man. So on behalf of the city council, I'd like to issue our condolences, express our sincerest condolences to the family of Renika Craig. She was there as a bystander, and because of this indiscriminate shooting, she'll no longer be able to go to the stage and watch that. It is completely unacceptable that anybody would do something like that. And the reason the law enforcement organizations joined me yesterday is to let you know that we're collaborating every day trying to prevent crime, but whenever you have a situation like this, it makes you stop and question, what can we do in addition to what we are doing to prevent it from happening ever again? Sometimes we don't know what that is, but when you sit around the table and start brainstorming, somebody will come up with an idea, and I can assure you that it's typically, if it's something that we think that will make a difference and make the city safer, it's something that we'll all embrace and collaborate on. We're very fortunate to have good federal partners, state partners, and are working with the police department and sheriff's department to try to reduce crime. But there's a component that we really can't, well, a lot of components we can't control. But one of them is the participation by those in the community that do know those that maybe have participated in these type of acts. And for whatever reason, maybe there's reluctance to reach out to the police department or the sheriff's department, but my hope is, is that someone will come forward, and it's usually best to come forward if you know something's getting ready to happen than after it has happened. But, you know, this is a plea or solicitation for your help in helping us make Mobile a safer city. So thank you for what you're already doing, but understand that we will have zero tolerance, no patience, when it comes to people that would do things like that. Changing the subject on a little lighter note, much lighter note, we're going to go back to having a run, a fun run called Lope the Loop, and that's the Henry Aaron Loop, and it starts at 8:00 AM and lasts till noon, and it's around, it's a 5K event around the Henry Aaron Loop, and it's open to any and everyone, runners, walkers, cyclists. You can bring your leashed pet with you, a parent with children in a stroller, wheelchair users, as I said, it's open for everybody, and it's just something to do to have a good time that Saturday at 8:00 AM. And you can register today at the Mobile Parks and Recreation website, it's mprd.reckdesk.com. Another event that we've been talking about, trying to help our citizens dispose of hazardous waste, is that from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM Saturday, at Seals Community Center, we'll be letting you drop off paint fluorescent bubs, it's open to Mobile residents only, and you can go to the City Mobile website, citymobile.org, and find out more about that, should you choose to want to drop off some of your hazardous materials. We're also, this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, the police department is accepting medications that are no longer being used by you or your family, and so that we can safely dispose of those prescription drugs. This helps prevent misuse, protects the environment, and ensures that the medications don't end up in the wrong hands. So that's at the Mobile Police Department Headquarters on Government Street from 10:00 to 2:00, and the drop off is free to the public. And if you want to make some kind of early arrangements to do that, you can just call the Mobile Police Department Headquarters, and they'll tell you how to do that. I have one proclamation to read today, and it's about nursing healthy appetites, and I would ask, is Dr. Tasha Jones, Dr. Charmaine Glass, Lois Gwynn, and Tiffany Harris James, are they present? If y'all could approach the podium, please. Thank you for being here today. The proclamation reads, "Whereas nurses serve as pillars of compassion, expertise, and leadership in our healthcare system, working tirelessly to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of individuals and families across the City of Mobile and beyond, and whereas the vision of nursing healthy appetites, led by future leaders working, is to celebrate this vital profession while building a future where every family has access to nutritious food and knowledge needed to lead healthy, empowered lives, and whereas NHA exemplifies innovation and community support by addressing food insecurity, promoting sustainable nutrition, and connecting young parents with mentors and tools that transform their households, and whereas through the power of community collaboration and generous sponsorships, NHA funds the creation of empowerment baskets, which include modern kitchen appliances such as air fryers, crock pots, and juicers, empowering young families to prepare healthy meals, stretch their budgets, and lead to more sustainable lives. Now therefore, I, William S. Simpson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2025, as Nursing Healthy Appetites Day in the City of Mobile. Thank you for what you did."
One second, please. There you go.
Good morning. On behalf of the Nursing Healthy Appetites Planning Committee, we extend our deepest gratitude to the Mayor, Sandy Simpson, Council, and City of Mobile for this special recognition. We are honored to accept this proclamation acknowledging nursing healthy appetites, which will take place on Tuesday, May 6, 2025, at 11:00 AM at the USA Strata Patient Care Center at 1601 Patient Center Street. The purpose of Nursing Healthy Appetites is to celebrate the unwavering dedication of nurses and their vital role in building healthier communities. This event not only honors the heart of healthcare, our nurses, but also highlights the importance of nutrition education and wellness, particularly for the young parents and families served through the Future Leaders Working Academy. This recognition affirms the shared commitment between the City of Mobile and our organization to uplift those who care for others. Together, we are planting seeds of change that will nourish both caregivers and the communities they serve. Thank you again for this honor and for standing with us. We celebrate the power of compassion, knowledge, and community wellness.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda. Second.
Promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of noise ordinance on May 24th on Royal Street, May 31st in Doyle Park, June 27th in Public Safety Memorial Park, May 5th in Quincy Drive, May 11th in Medal of Honor Park, June 27th and October 11th in Langin Park. So moved.
Promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council.
Hi, my name is Liliana Guyer, and I am the current Miss Mobile Bay. I'm a junior majoring in public health at the University of Alabama. The Miss America Organization plays a vital role in providing scholarships, offering millions of dollars in educational assistance each year to help young women pursue their academic and career goals, beyond financial support, and empowers participants by promoting confidence, leadership, and public speaking skills through competition and service opportunities. Title holders are also encouraged to become role models using their platforms to advocate for meaningful causes and give back to their communities through volunteerism and public engagement. My community service initiative, Live with a Passion for Compassion, is shedding a light on what bullying is, its repercussions, and how to take measures when it is noticed. I have created a website and Instagram page to reach as many people as possible. One will find colorful informational graphics, interactive activities, and resources by clicking on these platforms, mostly for teachers and community leaders. I also plan on speaking to students at local schools and continue giving away an annual scholarship every June to a senior at a local high school who shares my passion to reduce slash and bullying in their school. With a focus on awareness and action, my mission is to end the cyclical pattern of bullying. One out of every five students reports being bullied, and as children age, they are less likely to report incidents of bullying and suffer silently. In today's world, we see a need for an anti-bullying message more now than ever. I'm working to educate our younger generations while encouraging others to speak up. On behalf of the Miss Mobile Organization, we would like to thank the city council for their support. Also, we would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the Mobile County Commissioners for their generous sponsorship and continued support. Their contribution plays a vital role in empowering young women in our community, helping them grow as leaders, pursue educational opportunities, and make a meaningful impact through service. We are truly grateful for your commitment to our mission and to the future of young women we serve.
Yeah, thank you so much, and congratulations for all that you all do and everything.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to, because of the importance of this rezoning issue, ask the council for their indulgence if they could give me a few more than three minutes. I'm going to need more to explain exactly what's going on. There's been a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of things said, and I'd just like to clarify things if I can.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
They said they would support one minute, so you'll have a total of four minutes.
Thank you. I did distribute to each of you my presentation, so I hope that, that I don't get to, that you will take time in your own privacy of your own home and read it, please. Good morning, I welcome and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you regarding the Knollwood Housing Development. I am Clarence Ball, I'm the president of Ball Healthcare Services, that we operate skilled nursing homes here in Alabama, as well as in Florida. Seniors is our business. We study seniors, and we know what their needs are. That is why we're before you today. The Knollwood Apartment Homes is developed as an active adult residential development to provide high-quality housing for Mobile seniors. It is intended to help those that are working, as well as on social security. In our country, we have what's called trapped in the middle. We have seniors, people 55 years of age and older, that can't pay market, but they make too much for assistance. The rents are set based on debt on the facilities. Salaries are set whereby they're at 50% to 80% of Mobile's median income. And Mobile's median income for 2025 is $81,000. That means people making from $28,500 up to $52,600 are eligible for these units. Now, if you just think about that, we have civil servants that qualify in this category, firemen, policemen, paramedics, clerks that work in our offices, 55 years of age and meet this salary requirement, they're eligible. And I hate to think that anyone would say that they are not wanted or desired to live in a place like this. They've spent their time loving the city with service, and I think it's time for the city to love them back. The development is the initial phase of mixed income, mixed use development. Mixed income is, there will be some lower income, which will be the village. This, and the reason it is, we're asking for the rezoning of R1 is because the other parcels will house market rate rents, and that will be in the form of independent living and assisted living on the same campus. These people will benefit by the proximity of services, meals, housekeeping services, and everything else that you can gain by being on a campus setting. I've done this in Birmingham, where I want to do it in my hometown where it is really The development is being developed under the federal tax credit program that was created by President Ronald Reagan. For almost 40 years, it has been the principal way that housing with lower rents have been created in America. It is administered by the Department of Treasury, not HUD, the Department of Treasury. This is all private money that is going into this development. It's not government, it's not government housing. It is tax credits. This is financial institutions who are investing in this development. Everyone wants somebody somewhere else to do something about not enough good affordable housing. I want to do it, and I want to do it here. According to congressional testimony, across this country, we find that it is what local politicians-
Yeah, Mr. Ball, that's your four minutes. Yeah, let me ask you one question, Mr. Ball. What is the one, number one thing you would like to tell this council on this morning?
The number one thing? Seniors housing is needed. There's an elephant in the room, and I'd hate for something this meaningful to be lost because of misunderstandings. Now, what am I talking about? I'm talking zoning. That's number one. We all know that zoning is the first step in any development studies. Now, I've listened and I've heard that if we rezone it and it's not built, somebody else will come in, we don't know what's going to happen to it. That's not true. Zoning goes with the project, and before you, I am willing to make a contingency that if the development is not built, then zoning do not take place. It remains R1. Okay? Secondly, government housing. I want you to understand, this is not government housing, low-rent housing. This is totally different from Section 8. This is not HUD at all. This is tax credits capital, people are putting their money in to a first-rate operation.
So let me ask you this question, Mr. Ball. One of the concerns that I heard is that the apartments would have like two and three bedrooms inside of it. I mean, who will be managing, who will make sure that it's pretty much that seniors are there?
There is a management, there is a management company that will oversee the project, excuse me, the development, I don't like using that word. What I would say to that, there are two and three bedrooms. We must understand, when we say trapped in the middle, we have multi-generations living in households today. A lot of people 55 years of age and older are taking care of mama, or daddy, or they may have a dependent child. Okay? That's one instance. Another is if you're semi-retired, you're semi-retired, and you want to live there, you may want to keep an office in your house, because you're still working from home. And the beautiful thing about this program is, if you qualify going in, you're their favorite. Unlike Section 8, if you go in and you do better in your life with income, then your rents go up, or else you go off the roads. This is not like that. The tax credit program, that's why it is so beautiful.
And the questions or comments from the council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Ball, I want to say thank you for your desire to help our seniors in the City of Mobile. That's very commendable, and something that I agree we should be doing more of. And I know a lot of this, this written statement you gave us and a lot of the statements you made today were surrounding affordable housing or affordable senior housing, and I don't think anybody objects to senior housing or affordable senior housing in our area. I think the objections that have been raised that still remain unaddressed with a large portion of the residents in the area is that this is not an R1 zoning classification that you're requesting, and their desire is to have this parcel of land remain R1 for a whole slew of reasons, and I think that there's probably some common ground that could be found, but right now, we're not finding any common ground. We've seen little to no movement or response to any of the neighbors in the area, which, you know, they're predominantly seniors in the area. And so, you know, I'd ask you to, you know, go back to the drawing board and withdraw your application so that we can actually find something that works, like a similar developments in the area, like, say, Summerby, where they have a portion of this mixed use being single-family development. If we can go back to the drawing board and sort of expand, or, you know, see how it works for you and your development, I think it would be helpful to the neighbors. So my request of you would be, instead of just continuing down this road, to just withdraw, and let's go sit down and let's figure it out.
Councilman, I appreciate those comments, and I'm willing to meet with that association or any of the associations over there. We have tried to explain, but we are not heard often, and there again, in order for this project to go forward, I need to withdraw. That to me means that there's a closed mind, and what I'm trying to do, if I can get in front of people and explain what we're doing, the reason why the R1 is asking to be rezoned is that it's out of respect and consideration of the people who live there. It would result in a less intense density by just having 60 units. If I were to develop the R1 as it is, I can put 100 houses over there, okay? And then you would have more. I hope they understand that, but this is what they're not getting. Are they saying they'd rather have 100 houses there, or would they rather have 60?
Mr. President. Mr. Ball, I appreciate those comments, and, but it's not a fair argument. The argument you make is that it's, if I build this multifamily development in one hand, and the only alternative is that I go in there and build however many houses you said, you know, 100, 140, whatever it is. No, you can accomplish both. You can build a less dense, single-family residential neighborhood in there as well. You don't, it's not just, you know-
We have the issue of cost. That's why we're going in with the pods. If you do single-family, your cost rises, because you have houses on individual lots and maintenance. That's why we're going in with the pods where we can put four units in one building, five in another, and then that leaves green space to create for walking trails and other type of activities for. To move it over to one of the other parcels that you were referring to, that is market rate rents.
So I got two things, and then I'll defer, but the first one is, is that in this area, there are 10 current multifamily developments that exist, 10. And the R1 residential lots are being squeezed out. There are limited places where you can develop these single-family neighborhoods, and I think just us as sort of municipal planners, and we're looking at zoning for a city, we sort of have to have a different approach, not necessarily just your site, but the impact on the city as a whole, and I think that's some of the concerns that have been raised is that if this- And I think that's some of the concerns that have been raised is that if, if this entire parcel, not just the one that's being rezoned, but the one you own to the south and the one you own at the point at the east, if all of that is developed into multifamily units, then it doesn't create a very good mix of types of residences in the area. So I think there's a way to find that common ground where you can create a, a mix that say works with our zoning and planning. Um, but of course, not if you're not willing to, to, you know, move off of your, your current plan of, of R3 at all cost. You know, I mean, it just doesn't work. So I'm going to make that comment in the, uh, the other comment is, just down the road, I don't know, a few miles, there's an eight-hundred-unit apartment complex that was there, that's there. And, um, that's supporting this same endeavor potentially that you're trying to, to accomplish. Uh, and that's affordable housing. Uh, and then lastly, the, the comment is, on the parcel of land to the south of this R1 piece, that's currently zoned B1 already, why can't you build these townhouses there?
Where, where about now, to the south?
Yeah, just to the south. You own that entire corner, and then you have an R1 parcel right in the middle of it to the south. You've got B1-
Is that where the hospital's set, is where you're talking about?
South of that.
Be the parking, parking lot, I believe, is what B1 was for.
It used to be a parking lot, I believe. But why couldn't you build this, like, this, this fits that zoning classification already? You don't have to. So there are other options, I guess, is my point. This is not the only option, but it, when we have a community meeting, a hundred and twenty people show up, and then we have a public hearing and all these people show up, you know, and, and express these concerns. And, and then we get zero change, zero movement from y'all's end. It doesn't sound like there's really much give and take on all this. It just seems like your way or, that's, you know, that's it.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
This, this is a thirty-eight acre, uh, piece of property. A hospital anchored, it's set up on top, a three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-bed hospital with three doctors' offices, as well as a doctor's office, uh, across the street. So just think of the number of people that, that were there. That is where the healthcare portion is going to be built. This development, if you look at it in a little bit, just envision three sections. One, there will be assisted living and independent living together with services. That's where the hospital is. And all of that, that parking, there will be a multi-story for seniors. Again, fifty-five and over, uh, fifty to sixty. Why the, the R1 strip is so, uh, important is that if we move it over to any of the others, we will not be able to provide the single family like we wanted here on single stories. But in because of costs, construction costs, building individually, the best way to do it is the way we're designed, as well as we have cut density down. So one, it's not room to do all the market rate stuff that I think is what I'm hearing the community wants, where people will come in and pay whatever it costs to get the services. But we're also including on that campus, people that need assistance, not assistance directly, but lower housing cost. And, and, and that is what this is doing.
I just want to correct one thing. Market rate or subsidized or whatever, that is not part of this discussion. That is not part of the consideration that this city council takes in. That, that's not part of it. And this conversation continues to go down that road, and there's this effort to sort of put it out there like we're not supporting affordable housing. Saying that's just not part of the discussion. It's a matter of the type that is allowed, the use that is allowed. And right now, it's R1, and I think there's a strong desire amongst the people in the area who have a lot at, at stake as well. And they, they are stakeholders, they have a lot of, of say in this matter that they want single-family housing to be a portion of this. And, and maybe it's less than, than what that R1 parcel is right now. But there's zero discussion about it because y'all ain't coming to the table to talk about it. You just want to push forward with your plan. And like I said, they're, they're reasonable people. And, uh, but they, they're stakeholders in the community as well.
I'd like to meet with them. Could we do that before next session?
There's been, there's been several opportunities to meet. There was a community meeting before all this started where there was over a hundred and twenty people who showed up to it.
Uh, let me interject. Um, Mr. Ball, if you would reach out to Councilman Reynolds and try to see if I set up that meeting. Mr. Woods, did you have something?
Uh, yes, sir. And I, I just wanted to kind of just reiterate, um, the, the, you know, what was provided, what you talked about, uh, the proposed project, uh, that, that, you know, could go here. Um, again, I, I applaud everything that you do, um, it, whenever it comes to that. I mean, the end-of-life care, especially in the, in today's world where baby boomers, largest generation are, are coming up for retirement age. And I, I definitely, definitely see what your plan is and, and our proposed plan. Um, and then also to realize that a vibrant city has all kinds of facets of housing. Whether that's multifamily, single, uh, single apartments, uh, uh, single individual homes. Um, that, you know, a, a vibrant, thriving city has that. And I appreciate your desire to do that in the city of Mobile. Um, like you said, your home. Um, but, you know, again, uh, kind of just pointing back that, that the discussion here is not, not about what, what could go in there or what, what is going in there, what's proposed. It's really about the rezoning matter at hand. Um, the, the R1 kind of with the, on the same lines of, of Mr. Reynolds, um, the desire to keep that R1, um, even though it could be, and, you know, as you know, it could be more dense. Um, the desire from the neighbors to keep it, keep it R1 is there. And I, I do know, you know, last week, um, uh, it, this was laid over at the request of, um, at the request of your council, um, to, to, in order to provide time to, to talk to the, the residents in the community. And, um, two-week layover, uh, and we've already ate away a week of it. And, um, again, this site, I, I do know that this site is, is prime real estate to do something, to develop something. Um, and I definitely do not want to stand in the way of, of, of progress, especially when it comes to, to District Six, adjoining District Four and, and the city of Mobile as a whole. Um, but, you know, my, my, my concern too, though, is, is, you know, it'd be twelve months before something could be done again. And I, again, I don't, I don't want to hold any plans that you might have or, or want to accomplish up. Um, I, I kind of do stand with, or I do stand with Councilman Reynolds, just, um, over the next week, uh, I, I, I would ask you to, to possibly consider withdrawing and, and let's go sit down at, at a table with everybody and, and fully explain. Um, because you're bringing new information to me today that I've, I've attended the community meeting, um, you know, heard from, uh, Mr. Byrd, heard from your council. But, you know, there's nothing like the man that's got the plan in his head. So, um, I, I would honestly, because I, again, I don't want to hold things up. Um, but I, I would, I, I do think that there needs to be more time and more discussion of what this could be. Um, not that it factors into the rezoning by no means. But, um, you know, maybe, maybe the, the neighbors would consider, um, looking outside the box of, of, you know, what the future would hold for that site. So, but I, that, that's just my comment. Um, again, I do not want to hold up any progress across the city of Mobile whatsoever. But, um, I do think there might needs to be more conversation, um, with adjoining property owners to, to fully explore what, you know, what could not just be with this site, but as, as a whole.
Another question.
May I, um, ask your assistance in, uh, getting us a meeting set as quickly as possible?
Yes, sir, absolutely. I, you, you have mine, and I, I do believe in Councilman Reynolds.
We have a place to meet, uh, Alt Point, they have offered there. That's where we've been meeting. Uh, I'd like to get, get something done quickly.
If you could just reach out to Councilman, uh, Woods, Mr. Ball. Any other questions come, uh, Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Ball, for coming down today. Appreciate you, um, sharing this information with us. No questions, but, um, I also appreciate some clearing up of information, you know, why you have the development situated the way you have it, uh, talking about the assisted care uh, portion being located on one side of the development as opposed to the other. So that clears up some of those questions. And the idea that, um, this is not affordable, it is attainable, maybe some affordable, some market rate, that sort of thing. And which is what we have been talking about certainly in this city. There, there's a, a shortage of, of all housing and something for seniors, which we all know is needed. So, um, I appreciate you clearing up some of those misconceptions. And, um, if you were able to get with these two gentlemen, the, the two councilmen and the residents, and work out something to resolve all the issues, I think that's terrific. Um, look forward to hearing of, of progress that you all make. But, but again, thank you for coming down and providing us with all of this. It's, uh, we'll go through it and, and read it a little bit more closely. But, but I think that did clear up some of the questions that I had.
And I, I thank you, uh, Council Lady, uh, Gregory. There has been a lot of planning. This was not just-
Yeah, yeah.
It was one with the, three minutes left. There's been a lot of planning put into this development. Uh, market studies, twenty-two and twenty-four. Uh, we've tried to take into consideration everybody. Because we want to give Mobile something that they can be proud of.
Another question, Mr. Carr.
Mr. President, just one. You keep mentioning a four percent tax credit. Uh, one, is the rezoning contingent, or is the tax credit contingent upon the rezoning?
Yes, would be.
Okay. And then secondly, uh, the four percent tax credit, is there a certain date specific that it has to be submitted, uh, to the state or to the Treasury Department?
No, it is not a competitive bid. No, it is not in a competitive cycle. Uh, however, it really needs to be in this cycle, uh, where the other competitive, uh, applications are being considered.
What's the boundaries of this cycle?
Well, probably sometime around June, July.
So when would be the last time or last minute that you would be able to submit the application?
Probably a few months after that.
So we have a little bit of time.
Yeah, we have a little bit of time.
Okay, thank you.
And a question coming from-
I just want to make a point of order, Mr. President, regarding this rezoning. Uh, if we were truly trying to meet these deadlines, really, the only way we're going to meet any of these deadlines is for this application to be withdrawn. Because you can't just arbitrarily us go to a table and then we all just sort of mutually agree on it, and then it places, gets placed on our agenda and we approve it. Now, there are notice requirements. A rezoning is an ordinance, it's a change in law. And, and, uh, I requested this probably sixty days ago, but there hasn't been any budging or moving or whatever else, so that we could try to help this project along. So if, if we proceed down this road and don't reach resolution, we're definitely not going to, to reach any deadline. So I hope, I really hope that, uh, we can meet and we can come to some resolution to, to sort of satisfy the area at large and the sort of planning of the city, protecting the, the general, uh, public safety, health, welfare of our city. So thank you, Mr. Ball, for being down here today. I just want to make that point of order, Mr. President, and I believe the speaker's-
Well, it wasn't just, just a, a surprise as such. It came through Planning Commission, recommended eight to one. It almost passed unanimously for the rezoning. It's consistent with the city plan, who also identifies as best use for that property is R3.
And, and other-
And please don't confuse passion for what we do as desperation.
And other questions or comments from the council?
Just one, one, one question, and it has to do with the, the rezoning. Uh, it's my understanding that the Planning Commission has already approved this for rezoning as it is, coming from the Planning Commission to the council. So the Planning Commission thinks that this is an appropriate rezoning. Therefore, the only entity now that's in, at stake is the council. So to have it rezoned, in my mind, doesn't say that it has to be withdrawn because it's already passed Planning Commission for approval. So I think now i- is that moment of time to find whatever common ground within the design parameters that fit the Planning Commission's submission of what we have, if there's going to be a rezoning.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Ball.
Teresa Bettis.
Thank you in this body.
Teresa Bettis.
Good morning. My name, Teresa Bettis, uh, six oh two Bel Air Boulevard, Mobile, Alabama. Good morning to the citizens, the council, and administration. I am Teresa Bettis. I'm the executive director for the Center for Fair Housing. I'm here again today. Um, once again, to remind you that we have a duty, um, to affirmatively further fair housing. I feel that the city of Mobile must sign off on adhering to this duty. And they do that annually because of the receivership of federal funds that are received. Unfortunately, I've been with the Fair Housing Center since nineteen ninety-eight. And when I started, the lack of affordable housing was an impediment to fair housing choice. And over the last twenty-plus years, there has been no movement, but there has been neglect of the issue and addressing the lack of affordable housing. We have seen hundreds and now into the thousands of affordable units that have been taken away here in our city. Now we have an opportunity for you, the council, to address this issue and be the change that we seek. I've listened to the comments from many of the, uh, residents in your, in your community, fellow constituents. I was here approximately about twenty years ago before a different council about a, affordable housing development off of Ziegler near Alpine Hills. Um, it passed with a very slim measure. And, and so, again, I'm here twenty years later and we're still exact, at, dealing with issues around not in my backyard. And while the zoning issue is there, also in the fair housing, there's a need for inclusive zoning. But when I hear people say that they don't want government housing next to their housing, then you have to look at this as partially an instance of NIMBYism. You need to know that in Mobile, the fair market rent is a thousand and ninety-four dollars, but yet the average apartment rents for one thousand, three hundred and sixty-three. We are short over nine hundred units of affordable housing. While R1 for homeownership is, is a com, is a issue for affordable housing, many individuals who need this housing can't buy. So there needs to be viable solutions for decent, safe, and affordable housing. My question is, how much does the city's annual budget address the lack of affordable housing for those who are renters or who seek to own homes that are west of I-65? I'd also like to know, has the city conducted a comprehensive, or the council conducted a comprehensive study to determine the number of affordable housing units that are needed for its constituents? Time is about given. I still got a minute, or is it done?
Chief, you have another minute.
That was the second alarm. Okay.
Carr, give you one more minute.
Okay, thank you. Denying this zoning request and preventing this housing development from moving forward exposes the city for potential violations under federal estate laws. While it's currently zoned for R1 and single-family homes could be built, again, not everybody is in the posi, position of homeownership. When I think about, uh, the need for affordable housing, even in addressing residents who are seniors that moved from Harvey Taylor and Thomas James, who were given a eight-hundred-and-sixty-dollar voucher, there's nothing in Mobile that is decent, that you would put your mother or your grandmother in for that amount of money. So again, to reiterate, one, has a study been done? Do we know the actual number of units that's needed? That would guide. And when we talk about zoning, we also have to look at how are we more inclusive with our zoning? And again, are, nothing wrong with R1 zoning, but we do have to consider that not everybody is going to be able to purchase a home. And then where does that leave our seniors? Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to clear one thing up, uh, regarding, uh, R1 zoning. There's no requirement in R1 zoning that somebody has to own a home. You can rent a R1 home just like you can a R3. There's no requirement of that. So that argument, it's not, uh, you know, it's just in the whole water. You can still have an affordable, single-family home that's for rent. And they exist all over this city.
And other questions coming from, uh, Vice President?
Mine is not a, a question, but you brought up the, um, housing development that is off Ziegler. That was before my time on the council.
Yes.
However, I remember it. And, um, that housing subdivision over there off Ziegler is one of the nicest subdivisions along Ziegler.
It is.
Despite, um, the pushback- So despite the pushback that was received during all of that time, it is, it is a very nice development, always very well taken care of. So that certainly defies the, the criticism that, that you all experienced.
Another question. Mr. Carroll.
Just a statement. I don't remember seeing you at the chambers meetings for affordable and attainable housing, but however, the meeting, the next one is tomorrow morning at 8:30. And there's a current study for the number of units where and how affordable and attainable housing is needed in the city. So just drop in and see what's going on tomorrow.
I'll be there.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Greenlee Jaeger.
Hi, my name is Greenlee Jaeger. I am Miss G. Belize Team. I currently attend Satuma High School as a freshman. My involvement in the Miss America system has enabled me to meet and develop many sisterhood and like potentially lifelong relationships with other like-minded young ladies, as well as other opportunities such as me being here with you today, and thank you for that. The opportunity of the Miss America system is one of the nation's largest providers of scholarships for young women today. This certainly is empowering for these young women as we develop life skills needed to become successful in today's generation. It also provides opportunity for further education, sometimes otherwise not affordable. My community service initiative is G.'s Bracelets of Hope, in which spreads hope and awareness for breast cancer. Today, one in seven women will be, will develop breast cancer. Sadly, my grandmother was one of those who received the devastating diagnosis. When this occurred, my mother gifted her a bracelet with a toggle bearing the word "Hope," and I'm wearing it right now. Whenever she overcame and battled breast cancer, she then gave it to one of her friends who was recently diagnosed. My goal and my mission in my service initiative is to give back to my community and to fight against this terrible disease and to carry this tradition along. Today, we have no idea where that bracelet is, so it continues to spread hope along for its journey, and that is my goal. I recently hosted a tea and a series online on my social media to give back to my community and to support the brave cancer warriors that I have come to know personally. By doing this, I have raised money to support for the American Cancer Society, Shriners, and Pallets for Christ. Pallets for Christ is a new partnership that allows and supports cancer patients by flying them to their critical attention of medical needs and treatments at no cost. It raises fun, it also raises funds for the Shriners Hospital as they treat many cancer patients as well. I ask you today that you please keep me and your community ser, and my community service initiative in mind as you may think of any workshop or seminar that I can attend, and I'd like to thank the commissioners in the Mobile City Council for all of their donations for the Miss America organization. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for being a great advocate. Madam Clerk?
Fred Wheeler.
My name is Freddie Wheeler, 8405 Sterling Drive, Mobile, Alabama. I am the Legislative Director of Dixie Abate, Alabama's only motorcycle rights organization. Council President Small, council members, Mayor Stimson. Normally, this time of year, we request a proclamation about May being Motorcycle Awareness Month, asking drivers to be aware. Evidently, this is not working. No matter how many times we request this, riders from the motorcycle community continue to be run, ran over mostly through inattentive drivers. Last June in Alabama, a girl was bitten by a shark in Florida, and now the Alabama Legislature is poised to enact legislation for a shark alert system to warn swimmers of potential shark activity. I emphasize with the young lady, I wish to point out, though, not one person in Alabama died of a shark attack last year. The weekend of April 12th was deadly for riders, for within 24 hours of each other, multiple riders died, one of which was an MFRD fireman. I'm unaware of the cause of the accident, but rest assured, there's a reasonable chance drivers weren't paying attention. While these accidents happen around 8:30 at night, inattentive driving occurs at all hours, and while drivers are entering past a motorcycle account for many accidents, the other portion is due to riders themselves. The cost is high. Alabama last year lost over a half a million dollars and lost wages due to motorcycle fatalities, and that does not include medical and insurance costs or the cost of replacing an employee, let alone the human cost of losing your loved one. We try never to complain at Dixie Abate about issue without offering possible solutions. We offer our expertise, as we are riders and have the years of experience. First, last year, I sent an audit adopted by the City of Huntsville, making the City of Huntsville hunt hands-free to the Mobile's Public Safety Committee for them to adopt a similar audit. I'm renewing that request. Second, I worked with 20, for 20 years with state officials to secure, first, a training raise in the metro Mobile area. Unfortunately, this was lost recently due to construction at AIDT on the Causeway. I'm asking for some support for a temporary area that is controlled by the city and/or the county until we can get a more permanent solution in place. So next year, we will propose, Dixie Abate will propose that they amend Section 3258111, vehicle turning left, to add a penalty to make it a criminal offense if someone is killed. Finally, I'd like to take a point, I'd like to ask for one additional minute.
No one granted one additional minute? Vice President, one minute.
So I'd like to point out that Council President Small starts every meeting for people in the audience to silence their pages and turn off their electronic devices. I wish to point out that at no point during any city council meeting has anyone died. Thank you.
And a question or comment from the council? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice, I mean, Madam Clerk.
Timothy Howes.
Greetings, distinguished members of the council and the administration. Timothy Howes, I'll speak on behalf of the many hard-working residents of Mobile who are struggling to find stable housing because of the widespread industry standard requiring renters to earn three times the monthly rent. I want you all to take notice that a standard is not a law. Let's look at the numbers. The median household income in Mobile is just over $51,000 a year, or about $4,257 a month before taxes. For our residents aged 25 to 44, the age group driving much of our workforce and family life, the median income is even lower at $49,441 per year. Many families make even less, especially those under 25, fresh college graduates, who earn a median of only $24,490 annually, just over $2040 a month. That's kind of right at that same rate you would get if America went to the mandatory $15 minimum wage. Now, consider the reality. If the average rent for a modest apartment in Mobile is $1,200 a month, the three times the rent rule means a renter must show proof of $3,600 a month. That's well above what thousands of Mobileans and working families here actually bring home. In fact, many households, especially young families and single parents, barely make two times the asking rent, leaving them shut out of decent housing opportunities. Now, this policy, not law, but this policy does, doesn't just make life harder for those on the lower end of the income spectrum, it forces families into overcrowded or substandard housing, increases homelessness, and drives people out of our city in search of places where they can afford to live and work, like Georgia, whose legislation just abolished the three times rent rule, Huntsville, and Nashville. Mobile ranks eighth out of the 10 of the big cities that we have, you know, the Big Ten. We rank eighth out of 10 for median household income, and nearly one in five of our neighbors lives below the poverty line. That means one out of five people in this room is struggling from poverty. These are not just statistics, they are the faces of our teachers, healthcare workers, service industries, employees, and young professionals who keep our city running. What I come to you today is I urge you to consider how this industry standard is holding our community back. By supporting policies that make housing more accessible, by abolishing or reforming the three times the rent rule, we can help ensure that Mobile is a city where everyone has a fair shot at a safe and stable home. If this is not attainable here at the council, I respectfully ask you to use your voices and positions. Uh, additional minute? Actually...
Anybody grant Mr. Howes additional minute?
We've been doing it all day, why not?
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you for the transparency and honesty. I respectfully ask you to use your voices and positions to advocate to our legislators in Montgomery for statewide support on this issue. Our city's leadership can inspire change across Alabama, as we have done several times. But we need your help to make sure every resident in our state, let alone our city, has a fair chance at affordable housing. Please work with our state reps and senators to bring this issue to the forefront and pursue legislative solutions that benefit all Alabamians. I have developed a very well, it's, it's a very detailed report on how we can achieve these goals, and if anybody's up to meeting or scheduling a meeting, I'm more than open to that. And I will also deliver one of the other reports that I have detailing everything I just cited today to you all later on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to continue these conversations regarding pertinent city business. When people seek to raise a family or do business in a city, the first thing they evaluate are crime and the standard of education that is available. The potential perils nonetheless of each stem from one thing, and that is poverty. Remember, it is the duty of the city of Mobile to provide oversight and security for our children during the varying times when they are not in school, as well as an imperative for the city of Mobile to ensure a sound quality of life for all taxpaying citizens. How can we invest in a new arena and an airport, which ultimately places us in hundreds of millions of dollars of debt, as we saw an increase to the budget line item this morning, when we have a housing crisis and a potential recession underway? This was touted by the people who were supposed to be borrowing this money from. How can we tout towards revitalization when we're robbing our CIP budget to do a handful of houses, further placing our infrastructure capital, which is designed for things like drainage, in debt as well? Where do we get off spending $80,000 for tennis lessons when we don't have proper basketball goals in our neighborhood parks? When will Mobileans know what is being done with the remaining $26 billion from our ARP funds? How long before the administration provides an evaluation on our performance contracts? Mr. Lasky recently stated that we invested more money than ever before on crime prevention, yet most all Mobileans agree that obviously none of this is truly working. There is a serious dilemma with our city's legal department and its retention of third-party law firms. Mr. Carroll raised an excellent point last week regarding court matters. However, I will go on the record with saying that there was some coercive interference, which led to his erroneous conclusions. Similar interference is shown by OPR when dealing with factual claims against the city. A legislative body of rubber stamps allows for an executive branch to finesse, hoodwink, and bamboozle the very people who pay for everything the city does, including providing each of your salaries. Lastly, I'm going to email a document to the city clerk's office shortly, and if none of you advocate on behalf of Ms. Trotter, who was referenced last week regarding what she's facing with the Mobile Housing Authority, it shows precisely why people need new leadership and stewards of our city seal this August. Now, we know currently that the town will not permit us for these serious and robust dialogues and these conversations to address these monumental concerns in the city of Mobile, thus we shall continue that next week. Thank you for yielding the floor.
Resolution is held over. 01589 authorized agreement with Alabama Pool Works for Pool Chemistry Maintenance Services. 01590 authorized public works cooperative agreement and construction certification with the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners for the City of Mobile for the One Mobile Project. 01591 authorized agreement with Form Air Conditioning Company. 08593 and 594 approved purchase orders to CDW Government. 08595 approved purchase order to Jackson Creek Main Factory for animal transport trailer. 21596 authorized contract with Dallas Green to provide prevention and intervention services to students in Mobile County Public Schools. 6598 and 599 are authorizing settlement agreement and release of claims. 01603 rescind resolution. 01438 adopted March 11th, 2025. 01604 authorized agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for I-10 Mobile River Bridge and Bayway Project.
So moved.
Second.
Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I don't pass.
47597, consider a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of city right-of-way located on the west side of Knollwood Drive, just north of Medical Park Drive.
Move the table. Second. Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, 25018.
By council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced, 09605 through 6608.
Move the waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions, as read.
Second. Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Madam Clerk?
09605, transfer funds from District 1 District G and Area Account to Mobile Parks and Recreation. 6606, 607, and 608, determine appropriations to Trinity Gardens Communities, Community Civic Club, Prince of Peace Parish, Mobile Chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity, serve a public purpose, and approve payment.
So moved.
Second.
Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Resolution passes.
CIP resolution is being introduced, 09609 through 21611.
Move the waive the rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 21-610, with the rest being laid over for one week.
Second. Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
21610, authorized contract with Isaiah Engineering for Figures Park Community Center Mechanical Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolution is being introduced, 01612 through 21631.
Move the waive the rules for immediate consideration of Resolutions 08615, 08617, and 08618, with the rest being laid over for one week.
Second. Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
08615, approved purchase order to CDW Government for annual renewal of Net Motion Remote Access Security Software. 08617, approved purchase order to Technology International for heavy-duty police barricades. 08618, approved purchase order to truck equipment sales for trailer.
So moved.
Second.
Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I don't pass.
Call for public hearings. 41624, call for public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for property located at 2411 Deniseia Road, scheduled May 27. 41625, 626, 627, 628, 629, and 630 are calling for public hearings to amend Article 5, Section 64, neighborhood meetings, parking and loading, lot of record, previously approved planning approvals and planned unit developments, recording and record-keeping, terminating a previously approved planned unit development of the Unified Development Code, scheduled, all scheduled May 27.
So moved. Second. Prop. 8 and 8 in discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Public hearings is called.
Announcements.
District 5, Councilman Davis.
No announcements.
District 2, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements.
District 6, Councilman Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder for District 6 residents, May 15th at 5:30, we'll have a District 6 community meeting at Woodridge Baptist Church, and that's it for me. Thank you.
District 4, Councilman Reynolds. Uh, District 4, Councilman Reynolds. District 7, Vice President Gregory.
No announcements.
And greetings to the citizens of District 3. On this evening at 6 o'clock PM, uh, we will be having a community meeting with the Morningside and the Dahl River community. Uh, that event will take place at the Morningside Elementary School, 2700 South Greenbrier Drive. Again, that meeting will be this evening, uh, with the Morningside Community and the Dahl River Community. Again, that meeting will take place this evening at 6 o'clock PM. Also, I would like to, uh, announce that we will be having another community meeting talking about the community center and the TIP along Dolphin Island Parkway. That meeting will take place on April the 28th, uh, at 6 o'clock PM, which is next Monday at the B.C. Rain High School. We're inviting all the citizens, Soffa, DIP. Uh, many citizens have been asking about the community center updates and also about the TIP, but that's to be the topic of discussion on next Monday at 6 o'clock PM at the B.C. Rain High School. Also, on this coming Thursday, uh, we've been talking about a lot, uh, about this morning, uh, new affordable housing. Uh, we will be breaking ground on this coming Thursday at the Old Arlington School property. And, uh, at 9:00 AM, uh, we are going, the city is going to assist with building 23 single-family homes, each with income restriction to ensure long-term affordable for quality residents. Again, this will take place, um, this coming Thursday, April the 24th, and 9 o'clock AM at the, uh, Old Arlington School property, which is located in the Old Dale Community. And I'd like to, um, also thank the many volunteers and groups and the citizens that came out this past Saturday for our annual Easter egg hunt, which was held at the Gearyard Elementary School. Uh, thousands of ads, uh, hundreds of kids, and even the Easter bunny was present. And I'd like to thank all the sponsors, uh, Judge Shabani Hall, Judge Chris Arlich. Also, I'd like to thank, um, the sponsors of Drug Edu-, Drug Education Council, Franklin Primary Health, Bosley Party Rentals, Cumulus Media, Warrior 25, and of course, Gearyard Elementary School, and all the many groups and the volunteers that came out this past Saturday to make our annual Easter egg hunt a very great success. Uh, we couldn't ask for anything better, especially the weather. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
And prop. 8 and second, ending discussion. All in favor? All opposed? This means adjourn.